Jake, you ready?
Just gave me the thumbs up.
Gave me the thumbs up.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council Workshop on our boards and commissions and other committees. This is something, a goal we gave City Manager Roloff to look at in this year, in 2017. So without further ado, I will turn it over to City Manager Roloff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council had received a copy of the report, but if you don't have it with you, I have an extra copy if anybody needs one. This is, as the mayor said, this was something that the council asked me to take a look at, and I want to first thank City Attorney Lawrenson, Assistant City Manager, Director of Administrative Services, John Fitzpatrick, and my Administrative Assistant, Diane Moran. Each of them, at one level or another, did some research, and then they also cracked the whip with departments to provide information. It was really an interesting study because not only did I learn things about us, the information that we shared with our colleagues from other communities, it opened their eyes too to this as well, and everybody does things differently. But I want to just go through, just briefly, this is what we're going to be talking about in general in terms of our presentation today. We're going to talk about what we are calling required, boards, commissions, and committees, and I just, BCCs for short, just because it was easier to say it that way, and separate what are required versus what are local option. Talk about council liaisons to the boards, commissions, and committees, and then different considerations that we looked at as we talked to different people for you to talk about. And I'll get into those a little later, but these are some of the considerations. And then options for consideration. I would say that the options aren't necessarily, these are the best things that you can do. The only real discomfort I had about doing this study was because boards and commissions and committees are your jurisdiction. They exclusively belong to you, and I absolutely respect that. So when you're asking me to do something, that, this kind of goes against the grain of what I was trained to do, and that's not to interfere in a legislative policy issue. And boards and commission appointments are about as pure as you can get in terms of what is your jurisdiction. So the recommendations are not necessarily meant, oh, you need to do it this way or that way. It really is food for thought. I think you wanted me to push the envelope a little bit. That's what I sensed when council gave me the responsibility, and it was interesting to do it, but don't feel, you're certainly not going to break any sensitivities of mine. These are your boards, commissions, and committees, and you get to do with them as you deem appropriate. But there are some long-term things. So I want to get into...
Just one thing before we get going. This really stemmed out of the frustration I've had for the last two years of trying to find people to serve on boards and commissions. People are busy, I mean, there's so many, people have so many obligations with family and work and so forth, that is difficult. We've been meeting with all the chairs of the board and commissions for the last two years, trying to get their input as to how should we restructure some of this stuff right down to times, days of the week, that type of thing. We've run the, I think, a number of cases we've had quorum problems, some of the boards and commissions, because there aren't enough people show up. So this is really where it began, is trying to keep these boards and commissions, which are a very critical city and to us, fully staffed is neither word, but full complement of the people. So with that, I'll give back to you, Mr. Roloff.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add too, that it's very much appreciated that you organized the information with the matrices and, you know, what the staff involvement is, because that helps us make informed decisions, so thank you.
Oh, you're most welcome. And like I said, my colleagues said the same thing. They're like, I never thought of it until you, until you asked us yourselves. So to get into that, we do have, again, we're going to identify boards and commissions that are required of the city, either by statute, or they're indirectly required because certain policy decisions of council then necessitate the creation of a board or commission, typically by statute. For example, if you have a, if you decide to create a business improvement district, you by definition have created a business improvement district board. Boards and commissions that have been created by council policy and are not necessarily require a board, commission, or committee, but you've chosen to, either a specific policy area, or a concern that you feel needs additional citizen input on. And that's what we advertise. When we advertise for boards and commissions for the council, we want your input, we want your input, and we've sought a lot of input. And then identify council liaisons, because that was the other issue that came up in terms of council liaisons, and whether or not these assignments are required, or if they're created by our own choice. And then identify any functional connection between committees and their respective departments. So a lot of the appendices that are there kind of answer those questions. So the first one that came up was required boards and commissions. These are 10 that are required, because either they're required by statute, because we're a city, like, for example, the Police and Fire Commission. We have a police and fire department, we have a police and fire commission. But you can see the different boards and committees that exist because of either decision we've made, or they're just mandated in the first place. And that's 10 of them right off the start. So if you completely scrubbed yourselves of everything that you, you wanted to completely streamline it, you'd still have 10 at the end of the day, regardless of that, unless you disbanded the business improvement district and you got rid of your extratoritorial zoning ordinance. Those are things that are not going to happen. So at the end of the day, you're going to have 10. As Appendix A shows you, we also took a look at where it is in the statute, where it is in the code. So all of these are identified somewhere in statute, and then by, then we adopt them either by reference, or put whatever little twist we are allowed to do. There's some, you can't do a lot of. For example, plan commission, you don't have to have nine members, we do. That's just our choice. There's also, you know, terms and what department gets assigned to it. And then, we also provided in Appendix A, the number of meetings that are canceled are the past 24 months. We felt 24 was a little better than just going one year. But you can see that, for example, Police and Fire Commission didn't meet seven times. That was due to no items on the agenda. But they're a hiring body, so if we're not hiring or promoting, there's no need to meet. As opposed to, you know, board, let's see, excuse me, there's, I think if you get to the second page, you'll see some of them. The Commission on Equal Opportunity in Housing has never been called in the entire nine years I've been with the city. Now, that's a specific area that you would need to call. Parking utility, half of their meetings never took place because of either lack of a quorum or lack of items. So it gives you an idea of the different reasons why. So we provided that information, and then B is really just what I would call an exhaustive summary of each board or commission. So you can go to any board or commission in particular, look at that, and see what the, the history of it is, how it got created, and things of that nature. So you get an idea. But 10 are required. Then there are 14 others that are what we're just referring to as local option, boards, commissions, and committees. Now, some of these, these are all listed in alphabetical order, they're not by order of importance. Two of them, for example, the Parks Advisory Board and the Museum Board, there are provisions and statutes for a parks board, or a parks commission, and a museum board, but they're if you do it a certain way. We don't do it those certain ways. For example, the museum, to have a museum board, you would have to charge, you're required to charge free admission. We charge admission, that's not the only reason we don't do it that way, but we have, we've done those in lieu of those more required ones. They could just as easily be on the required list. So, you know, I'm not suggesting the parks and museum board go away, because they're a fundamental part of what we do. But you'll see that some of these have obviously been created because of a policy issue by the council. Most of these have existed for a while. Some that have come up recently are more arts and beautification, bike and ped, sustainability's about 10 years old, rental housing was just redone. You'll notice that what's not on there is the diversity committee. So technically, we have a 15th. So you can see that whenever an issue came up, and I'll take a little responsibility for the diversity committee, because when I did the report to council, I said, one of your options is to do a committee. So it's sort of, you know, stop us before we, before we do this again. But you can see that these are all by local option, and then in addition, we also have the Opera House, the Oshkosh Opera House Foundation Convention and Visitors Bureau. They're not boards and commissions per se, but they are something that we send a member to. So those are all there. That kind of, oh, I'm...
Oh, no, sorry.
Oh, just, okay, that's good. Which kind of segues to council liaisons.
And with going is the CVB, the CVB and then the Grand Opera House Foundation Board, is part of the reason why the city has representation there is because of the financial, I would imagine, because we as the city make a financial contribution to both of the, obviously, to the grand, we do that, but then CVB, they get room tax dollars, which in theory can be, you know, used for many different things, so that would make sense to have that as a...
The practical side, they're smart, they're smart to have a member of council on that. And that kind of segues to the council liaisons. There's currently 15 boards, commissions, and committees that have council liaisons. This was interesting research that City Attorney Lawrenson did. Not a single one is required by statute. Those are all local option. Now, why? I think the committees value your input. They value your ability to bring things back to the council from that committee, and not necessarily advocate on behalf. That's, that's your, that's your option if you choose to advocate on something, but certainly to be able to give a flavor of the meeting and the proceedings to your, to your colleagues on the council. Everybody does it differently, but I know that more boards and commissions have asked in the past to have a council liaison. I remember one, Councilmember Pansky, we were at a bid meeting, and they, can we get a council liaison? They really liked the fact that council members came, but there's only, there's only seven of you, and even with 15, that's, that's averages out to over two per person, and you know that your different assignments, some carry more, some carry less. And that council serve at least two, on average, at two. Some council members serve on as many as four. And the two assignments, I know that the, historically, the mayors have viewed the Opera House Foundation and the CVB as another assignment, because they do have a substantial time commitment that they, that they play. And I know with the vacancy on the CVB board, Deputy Mayor Herman's busy on top of his normal duty, so those are legitimate ones. So then you're really talking about 17. So now you're at about two and a half. We conducted a survey, and that's what you see on Appendix C. And all I did, I did the cities that operate under Chapter 64, only because if there is a belief that there's a difference in council manager cities, you'd see it here. And this is where I got the comments. You can see that while we lead the pack with 24, we're not far behind some of the other ones. You can see that there's a lot of them that they've created by code, not by statute, and they don't necessarily have the committees that we talk about. They have their own committees, that their own group, their own community has decided we need a board or commission. And you'll see that, how many have liaisons? Platteville actually, it looks like they have one for virtually every board or commission. So there's seven members of the council, they average three. Nobody else goes higher than that, although Fond du Lacet 15. So you can see that these are, we're not alone in this. This is, this is common to everybody.
If you look at these boards you're talking about, Mark, and where council members sit on them, I think it's because they have an overall vision of the city. You know, parking throughout the city, traffic throughout the city, you know, Museum Board, city-owned museum. So I think putting council members on certain boards is based on what the, what the board is, really is, and that's why they want a council member on there. Like the parks, we have 17 parks throughout the city of Oshkosh. That's a big chunk of land that's used by our citizens, so I think that's the value of...
Oh, sure.
...why these boards want council members on them.
And I think that's why the more boards would like, if you ask the boards that don't have a council liaison, if they want a council liaison, I would venture to guess that most of them would say, sure, we'll have another one. Then we're going to make it on an average of three assignments per. So, and you'd see, that's what happened in Platteville. So that just kind of lays out, you're not alone in terms of the council liaison demands, that your colleagues in other communities are also seeing that.
Another thing too, according to what Steve said, you know, the work we do at any board or commission, be it landmarks or plan, it's more in-depth as to what the subject matter is before it gets to the council. So we're there, we can answer questions.
Right.
Guys, you know, what all do you, I mean, you know, plan commission, we can spend a lot of that time on just one item, and it's pretty well-vetted by the time it gets to us, so...
Sure, I mean...
That's the biggest, biggest advantage.
The staff reports certainly have value, but the flavor of the meeting, the proceedings that you bring, has value. There's no question about that. Anyway, I kind of already brushed over these, the council liaisons, 15, none are required by statute, so they're all a result of council policies. So some considerations that staff went through as we were evaluating this, and these are more general statements, and as we looked at these, one of the things we thought of is whether you're considering it now because you're maybe interested in paring down the number of committees. These questions, if you just reword them just slightly, could also apply if you're considering adding a committee. And can you, and ask yourself these types of questions. Can any of the 14 local options be absorbed into any of the 10 required, BCCs? Do any of the 14 local options share a compatible mission or a common liaison department? And there's, Appendix D has the listing of the distribution of boards, commissions, and committees based on the primary department's assignments. Community development leads the pack with 12, but I think the very nature of the word "community development," that's very normal, most communities, if you talk about where you have your biggest concentration of citizen committees, it's in community development planning, because that's the nature of, that's the nature of that beast. But you can see that, you know, administrative services has two. Transportation, you know, one of our smallest departments, has three. So you can take a look at these, and do they share a compatible mission or a common liaison or department? Are any of the missions of the local option, BCCs, outdated or in need of reconsideration? The example that I, that I typically use is, the council had created an urban wildlife committee a few years back, when the quarry deer thing became a big issue, but after a few years, the committee itself recommended their own disbandment, because they felt, going along the lines of number three here, is that maybe our missions become outdated or needs to be reconsidered. And the council said, thank you, and they disbanded them. Are any boards, commissions, committees duplicating the work of another one? That's a judgment call. You know, you can sit, you could sit and argue that, that's for you guys to collectively decide. Can any of the BCCs be considered an ad hoc committee to address specific issues on an as-needed basis, as opposed to being a regularly scheduled type of group? And then lastly, instead of creating a new board, commissioner, committee, and this is kind of the one, if you're looking at new ones, you know, can issues be referred to an existing board, commissioner, committee as an ad hoc assignment, or just, would you guys take a look at that and just see what happens? So those are generally those things.
On your item number five up there, regarding the as-needed basis, would you still have the committees or boards formed how they are currently, with a scheduled meeting that you just canceled? Or would you try to give notice ahead of time, just so that you're kind of guaranteed a quorum? Like what, how would you work that in regards to the ad, as-needed basis?
The as-needed would be, we've got an issue that we want to work on, the council wants to work on. Rather than creating a committee, could one of the boards or commissions say, let's make this an ad hoc, it could be a subcommittee of that group?
How do you guarantee a quorum, then?
Once you decide who the group is, and you give them a charge, then it would be...
Goes on their agenda, right?
Yeah, you say, we're going to make a committee of five. Think of like the council, the subcommittee the council created for itself. It's only three of you for the, for the council...
Chambers.
Chambers, and it's mayor, councilmember Palmieri, deputy mayor Herman, so three. And now that technically is a formal committee. We have to notice that group. So it kind of is like that. It's a narrow issue. You don't, the council decided, let's send three of us to that.
And it's limited in scope.
And then your scope, yeah, and that's it, the scope.
Right.
Once we're done, we're done, basically.
So when you're done, you're done. And, and then you know, and you're, and then you just thank you for your service, whether it's a citizen committee or a council subcommittee. Can you do more of those if something like that comes up? So that was, those are the considerations that we went through before we went to the different options. And so some of these options, and again, if you disagree with them, I will, I will respect your disagreement 100% because they just, they can just, everybody has their own comfort zone with these. As I mentioned, on Appendix D, transportation, one of our smallest departments, has three committees. You have three separate groups of minutes. The secretary, the administrative assistant for Mr. Collins comes to the meeting, that person comes whether or not quorum shows up or not, and then you're, you're paying that person either to be there, sometimes even be there on overtime. Consolidate the parking utility and traffic review advisory board into a single parking and traffic committee, or consolidate them with transit into a single transportation committee. Just food for thought.
You could also argue you could put bike and ped in there as part of...
I was just going to say, how would bike and...
Now you're thinking. I mean, those are the things...
Transportation, you know, be it bike, car, bus, your feet, transportation is transportation.
So you could, you could do that.
Bike, transportation.
And there's always been, with perspective bike and ped, there's, there's been multiple debates going on amongst the committee. Should, should it be with transportation, or should it be with planning? Should, if it's assigned to planning, should transportation people be there? I mean, so you get that issue all the time.
That's actually come up in bike and ped, where we have invited, you know, either Steve Godey or Jim from transportation directly to attend our meetings, because there is a lot of overlap, there is a lot of...
As you get into the implementation.
Concerns and questions, right. So I, there would be value in that, and I can see support from bike and ped in that as well.
Is that kind of a sense that you're getting from folks on the committee?
We have not discussed this, but I, from previous meetings, we have asked for input from Jim Collins and Steve Godey. It would be.
These were not original observations, so...
And not, not to jump too far ahead, but I, I would think that bike and ped would be more of a, would be more in line with this than it would be putting them in with the sustainability. Even though it's, I mean, you can argue bike, you know, bike, you know, with sustain, but I think it's, it fits more under the transportation than it would be under sustainability.
And I can give you my thinking, but I, I...
Again, we're not making any decisions tonight, so...
Yeah. Combine Arts and Beautification, the Grand Opera House Advisory Board into the Landmarks Commission. And the logic behind that was just that, that Landmarks Commission has an overall mission of preserving historical structures and recognizing public art and architecture. Whenever we have the, the Canthis Awards, they're talking about art and architecture as it builds in. Arts and Beautification was created a few years ago to address public art. That's a pretty narrow mission. Do you want it, is it, do you want to keep it that way, because you feel that's important? If you do, that's great. The Grand Opera House Advisory Board is to take a look at one specific facility, that we actually have an independent nonprofit board that has a council liaison. That's been a sensitive issue, and I'll just share the story, because most of you weren't here when it, when the discussion happened, but this isn't the first council that debated this issue. When the council debated it, the only one that was on the table was the Grand Opera House Advisory Board, and nobody could do it. It's like, yeah, but these people have been serving for 25 years. And, and they do, you have a dedic, you have a dedicated group of people there, let me tell you. They care about the grand, and they were the ones, they probably date back to the 80s when they say, those people saved the grand. If you want to give credit to anybody, you know, they're the ones who pushed the issue, got council to put it on the ballot, and once council had it created, it was like, well, these are the people to run. But then as the foundation got created, their, their mission kind of changed. But again, it's a dedicated group of people.
It would make sense to have the Grand Opera House Advisory Board part of the landmarks, because we do own the building. You know, they do come to us if they're going to do something. It has to go through landmarks, the same thing. You know, the library we own, we own this building, we own the museum, and I think all of these city-owned structures, because of their historic value, should go through the Landmarks Commission. I don't think, Caroline, you're on the Arts and Beautification. I think it's a separate issue from the historic preservation. We're just trying to get that Arts and Beautification up and running, and there's a lot of issues that technically are nothing, nothing historical right now.
One of the options is to eliminate the advisory board completely, because the, the work of the foundation maybe has supplanted that. Again, something for the, for the council to think about.
Can we, this is a question for Lynn, and you, can we, if we decide to roll this into one, can we increase the number of members of landmarks, or some of those people into the landmarks commission?
Landmarks is on the required list, so I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, we'd have to just look at the statute, but in, like, likely you probably can.
I think that would be a nice way of doing it.
Want to check the statute on that.
But the other issue with increasing the size of the committee, then, is you also then increase the size of the quorum required. So you could actually make it the situation where it may become difficult to get a quorum for meetings. There's that delicate balance between having the right size to get the work done, but not being so large that you can't pull a quorum together.
Could you do an initial group at larger size, and then after a year, look at it and say, we're not getting quorum?
Well, we'd have, as related to this, we'd have to check with the statute.
Look at the statute.
Because landmarks is a required one by statute, so statute dictates it. It was a, a local option, you can pretty much do whatever, whatever you feel.
Because like you said, the Grand Opera House Advisory Board has dedicated members, you just don't leave them on the cold, you know, and say, thanks for your 20 years of service, but there's no longer a board.
So...
And this doesn't even include some of our, like, public-private partnership type things, like GoADC and JRB and...
Correct.
Board of Health, because we have a member that sits, the city has a member, a council member that sits on Board of Health.
Right.
Board of Health, yeah.
And it's not, it's not a mandate that we have one, but it's a practical reality that we should have one, and that's why it's, it's always good. So I didn't even get into those issues, and so, if I missed that, I apologize, but there was, the monster was only so big, and my arms were only so long, so I got a...
You know, I think that the key thing in a review like this is, obviously, we need citizen participation, we want citizen participation, but I know sometimes in some of these smaller boards, they don't get the quorum because they really don't have an agenda. Because, but if you start consolidating and putting two or three items on one committee, they're going to have more reasons to meet, and those board members will come to the meeting.
Or the other thing is, is that if you change, you know, a lot of the, their meetings are scheduled monthly, but there may not be something on this agenda. You can look at maybe scheduling them quarterly.
Right. Sure, it's up to the committees, yeah, yeah.
For example, with the plan commission, there have been occasions when, you know, in 10 or 15 minutes, there's been others on those three hours.
Right. What's on the agenda. But I, you know, I sat on the parking utility four years of my eight, eight years in council, and most of the time, we didn't meet because there's no agenda items. But if we were tied with the traffic review, or a couple other committees, then there would be a reason for that, that group to meet, because you would have other issues to work on. And I think that's the important piece. I think citizen time is valuable too, as much as council time is.
Exactly, exactly.
So is the value of the citizen time, and they want to make sure that there's a reason for them to come to a meeting. And so I think looking at that is, is a big piece of it too. And, you know, sometimes we do have to decide that a committee is no longer needed, whether they've been on it for five years, 10 years, or one year, or 20.
The urban wildlife, we have the problem.
Right.
Just glancing at the statute, since you talked long enough for me, I don't see that there's any requirement about the numbers for Landmarks Commission.
You could do that. One of the other ones is to restructure long-range finance as an ad hoc committee. You know, the awkward part of, of long-range finance is that there's a lot of things you could get involved in, and there were debates early on whether that should be somewhat of a budget review committee. of a Budget Review Committee. The council decided, well, we should be involved in that because we're the, we're the ones as the Board of Directors of the city to make those calls, and it's already a time-consuming process. Do you do that? Adding another layer is not required by law, but it may make it more difficult for the council to ultimately approve it. Another way, there are, another way of looking at it, there are some things that I think the committee's done and been very valuable to us. Some of the things that are more required, our investment policy, our fund balance policy, those are things that that did.
Fees.
Fees, and the point system, the evaluation for the...
CIP.
CIPs, which, you know, that's, I have found that to be of great value. It may be appropriate to maybe look at those things once every three to five years, so could you replace those with task, a task force?
Bad hacker, yeah.
And you could do that. And I know that quorums have been an issue, for example, with that committee. That may solve the problem if they got a focus to something to work on specifically, you may get better results. Equal Housing Opportunity Commission, restructure that to make that an ad hoc. We have not had a meeting for this group, but there is a requirement that we have it. Could it either be ad hoc, so that when something comes up? I had somebody introduce themselves to me right after I started with the city in 2008, and they said, oh, I'm the Chair of the Equal Housing Opportunity Committee. I said, well, that's nice, and I didn't give much thought to it until he said, and we, I haven't, we haven't met since I became the chairman. So it was seven years, and he had been appointed, and that committee only meets when there is a complaint. Can that be restructured as an ad hoc committee? Because I think we keep reappointing these poor people, and now that person's up to 16 years, and the person hasn't had a single meeting, so...
There's never been a complaint?
Not in that, no, not.
But they'd be tied into the, to the other one now that we just created with the...
Rental housing.
That was one of the things that I kicked out there, that that's something we could talk about, and that's the next one.
Okay.
Restructure rental housing as an ad hoc committee or consolidate with Equal Housing Opportunity Commission? That's one of the things we could look at.
It's really one of the same complaints, yes.
Because one of the original issues that came up with the Equal Housing Opportunity, and it really shows you how things get dated over time. It was, the concern was about single women being discriminated against when they wanted to get housing for their family. That may still exist, but it was a bigger issue 20 years ago than it is today, but could that be done? Is that a legitimate issue with rental housing? I would say it is. So something that, again, something to think about. The council already kicked this one around, do you, what do you do with the Bike and Ped? Here's the reason I put these two together, and the logic behind it was the frustrations, and I say frustrations, and this is happening at the committee that, with the Board and Commission Chairs, they're, the common complaint from the Chair of both of those groups is because they don't really have a specific, a specific department. I mean, you can, I've assigned planning to Bike and Ped because a lot of that is planning, planning for Bike and Ped, but the implementation doesn't lie with planning, the implementation lies with engineering and/or transportation. So on the, on the planning side, it's a great idea. On the implementation side, it's not as good an idea. So there's no one department. Similarly, sustainability, that's always been. Originally, sustainability was called Energy and Environment, and it was assigned to, who wants to guess? Don't guess, because I know you know, Lori. Does anybody remember? It was under purchasing. Why purchasing? Because facilities was also under purchasing, and it was felt that looking at the facilities and making them more energy efficient was a good thing to do. I came and said, every sustainability type of board I've seen has come out of planning. Again, develop the plan, then implement the plan. But the challenge has been, and I think the SAB has had some legitimate gripes over the years, and I am probably near the top, if not at the top of the list, of violators of that. When we were working on the Public Works Garage, it wasn't until we were getting ready to go out to bid, we didn't go to the SAB. When we did the storm water pump station at Menominee Park, we had great public input sessions with the neighbors there, but we didn't go to SAB, and somebody said, did you ever hear of a green roof, Mark? And I said, I don't care what color you paint it. So there was a little learning on Mark's side, and so, and I think it pointed it out, and I've shared that with Chairman Margie Davy, and we've had a laugh over that, I don't care what color the roof is. But the reality is, they had ideas that went through. Why? Because they're not necessarily assigned to a department on the implementation side, but they're strong on the planning side. So do we have a sustainability plan? Yes, we do. But the implementation stuff is a little tighter. So those two, because they share the same type of concern about not having a home department for this, because they're so broad in their mission, that that makes it a little tougher.
But Caroline, with Bike and Ped, would you say that a number of the folks that are on Bike and Ped are there because they would like to share the road and share the transportation, our transportation networks as an equal, I guess?
Absolutely. It's a mission of our members. That's why they're there, because they want their input, they want to make it a better city for people not in a vehicle.
And you know what? It's, what's really interesting is, and maybe it's a matter of maturation of the groups, getting the plan done is really important, but then implementing the plan is important too. And that could be an issue, has it matured, that you move it someplace else now that it has matured? Because we do have a Bike and Ped plan, so the planning side isn't as necessary as the implementation side now. And I think you have advocates on that committee that just want to get these done. They want to, you know, is it going to be a dedicated bike lane? Is it going to be a charo? That's an implementation side thing, that's not necessarily a planning side thing.
Well, and I think that there may be some perspectives on the SAB, on that Sustainability Advisory, that they might be more desiring of being rolled in with Plan Commission because of land use.
And/or consolidate with the Plan Commission. So yeah, and you're right.
Yeah, it could go either way.
Yeah. Now, I'm switching gears a little bit. Again, these are all food for thought. Remove council liaisons as required members. In the text of my report, it's really more about making, maybe make council members ex officio. I think the value that I've seen and heard over the years, and I've seen it implemented here very well, is that it's very important that you're there. That flavor of the meeting, it sounds corny, but it is not. I have seen things over the years hinge on the input of a council member saying, you're missing it, I was there, this is what happened. And sometimes the person isn't even advocating their own position. But if you're doing a liaison job, you're given the whole perspective of one group, you're an envoy. Do you need a vote? I'll leave that to you to answer. Do you need the vote? Because when it goes to council, you get the ultimate vote. But if you don't make it, the danger, and Lynn and I discussed this, the danger is, do you make it, do you feel like then you don't need to be there? And my message to you is, if you absolutely are needed there. In fact, you're going to be needed there more as an ex officio than you are with a vote, because that's, you're the one being the envoy going to the full council.
Well, I think it depends on your philosophical view as to, since it is optional, why council members are liaisons are, you know, some may feel like, you know, they're selecting areas of interest because, you know, it's a champion-type thing, advocate, whereas others, you know, look at it more as a reporting, you know, neutral. So I guess it just depends on how we...
I agree with Lori, and I go back to what, when I first got on council, and Mayor Tower, you know, he said, citizens look at the council member as an important person. They don't want him maybe leading the committee because of that's like steering...
Exactly.
Where the committee's going to go, but you're still an important piece, and they value that council member, and I, that's an important thing. Because I've been asked to chair numerous committees, and I absolutely refuse. I don't think that's our role. Our role is to be there as that liaison and let them make the decisions, and we can have a vote, but, you know.
The idea is that...
It also shows that there's an interest in this committee report that is...
And that's a value.
That they're relevant, that they're relevant, it validates them.
Value of the committee, yeah.
And, but if you didn't make a meeting, then you wouldn't hit, hurt a quorum. Because one of the things you know, as a liaison to multiple committees, you're getting pulled in a lot of different directions. This would enable you to miss a meeting without the same guilt, for lack of a better term. But it doesn't, it shouldn't diminish the importance of your role, and so, that's just a consideration, and it sounds like you're at least thinking about those types of things.
Well, if I have to miss the Plan Commission or Landmarks meeting, I will check with Debbie first to make sure, is this going to cause a quorum problem, if so, I can rearrange a schedule to get there.
I think you make that commitment when you run for council, you're going to be on a couple boards, and they're going to meet separate, and that's part of the job?
I'd agree.
It was mentioned earlier, you could take a look at some of these committees, you could change the frequency of the meetings. Or if you consolidate, you may not need to, because as Deputy Mayor Herman mentioned, you know, if you give them more to do, then they've got...
More reason to meet.
More reason to meet. So, but frequency is certainly there, and you can see from Appendix A, some of the candidates for possible changes in that. Change membership criteria for local option committees, and I'm going to defer to the mayor because we have had this discussion with the Chairs of the Boards and Commissions. I put a slight twist on this because the required boards and commissions have some specific guidelines. Now, that doesn't mean they all have to be city residents. In fact, for example, the Library Board and the Bid Board, they both have some guidelines in terms of who should, who may and may not be on those committees or some required memberships. And in the case of the bid, it's, you want membership of businesses as well as ownership interests. So you've got those things in there. So I just put a different twist on this and just said, for your local option committees. Now maybe, I remember this early on when Long Range Finance was created, Mayor Tower said, oh, I think I know somebody at the university who'd make a good member. And when he was all ready to recommend appointment to that person, then found out that she didn't live in the city. But does that necessarily, he said, boy, it's too bad. Now, just, I just used that one example, and I know you've heard that before, because you meet somebody, you think they might be a good person for a Board or Commission, you do the ask, and then you're told, oh, but I live here or there. Only local option. The local options don't have quasi-judicial, quasi-legislative authority. The required boards and commissions, some of those things do. And from a policy standpoint, you probably don't want to, I don't think, in some cases, the law won't allow it, but from a policy standpoint, that makes sense, because you don't want to necessarily start delegating things on a quasi-judicial nature to a non-resident. But if it's stuff like Bike and Ped, if you've got a great bicycle, you know, advocate, or somebody who's knowledgeable about bicycle issues, and they don't have any authority except to recommend something to the council, maybe it's okay. Again, that's a very personal issue. You decide who you want on your boards, commissions, and committees, but it's something to think about.
Well, it comes down to the museum, for example. They're not just history of Oshkosh, it's history pretty much of the county. Are there people there that would be good members of that board because they're interested in the history of the county? The other thing is, there's a lot of people who've approached me, Leadership's a good example. You go through that list of 10 participants, and it thins out pretty fast as to who lives in Oshkosh. So are we missing people who are very involved in the community that just don't happen to live in the Oshkosh? So I think we've got to think about that. Whoever they serve in the board, if they're, if they're a non-voting member, but their input is valued, I think we have to consider that pretty heavily, and...
I would say that, you know, I've made presentations to Leadership Oshkosh since I've been here, and about half the class are non-residents. But they care enough that they're there, but they, but that's just one example. I've been on the United Way Board, I've never done a survey of it, but I know there's a handful of folks that don't live in the city itself. Clearly, it doesn't mean they don't care, it just means they just happen to live at a different postal address than us.
But those attendees will serve as an adjunct on a board during their duration in Leadership Oshkosh. So the people who, right, Tom of Algoma, they're on a whatever board, they make a great board number, but they live in the Tom of Algoma. So I think that's an area we've got to really, the legal aspects of it, but look at it hard and fast.
My conclusions are very general, and I think council has glommed on to the flavor of the report. The realignment was a component of our strategic plan, so it's very appropriate that this discussion take place. It wasn't intended to diminish the worker value of our boards and commissions, but rather respect their purpose. And I hope, I hope that anybody who may hear through the grapevine, well, Mark proposed to get rid of Long Range Finance, you know, please understand that the work of that committee is very important. How you organize that work is really more the issue. And then the options are just to provide, you know, structures to efficiently, effectively, and comprehensively consider issues that impact our community. So that's, that's pretty much it.
So what are you looking for?
Well, what are you looking for?
It's back in our court.
I think the next steps are, I think you need to put this on the agenda, and whether you use my recommendations or my options as a starting point, but I already heard some of you throw out, well, what about this twist on this idea? Absolutely.
Well, I can see too, for example, we didn't even get to the discussion about diversity or inclusion, and I know that we've never really come to a conclusion on that, but if we were going ad hoc with the Equal Rights Commission or rental housing, you know, perhaps there's an opportunity that that could come in under that group umbrella if that were to materialize.
So you probably put it under, have somebody, the mayor or somebody, put it under Council Discussion Direction, and we can have those discussions.
Mark, would it be worthwhile to, I don't know who is on what or when other meetings are, but to bring this to the boards and committees that we are currently serving on, to get any sense of recommendation from them?
We want to present this to the Chairs of the Boards and Commissions at our next meeting, which is...
Early July.
I know a couple committees that have been ready. It's been discussed at the Parks Board, I believe, a little bit.
And Parking Utilities, talked about it, Transit, or Traffic Review.
With our quarterly meetings, with the Chairs though, we ask if you can't make it as the Chair, send someone. Some boards and commissions that no one has ever shown up.
One of the things I could do, and, but I don't want necessarily the, my options to be the only ideas, but what I could do is maybe list these options on a piece of paper, and on a scale of one to five, one you don't like it, five you like it a lot, at least give you a flavor of your reaction to it. Does that sound okay?
Well, I was just going to suggest, maybe we have like a mini survey, you know, that gets rolled up into the discussion at council, the survey of those participants in each of the boards and commissions.
And maybe even a question that says, if your Board or Commission rolls into another one, would you be interested in continuing to serve? Because maybe they would not know...
Right, right.
Because they only got on there for that one reason, and now if that's consolidated with a bunch of stuff that they're not really interested in. So that might be an impact too. We might want to survey our citizen volunteers in that survey of, you know, we're looking at consolidation, and maybe they have some ideas too, that would work.
Well...
The value is all, it's all about value.
The value of taping the meeting is that we can, Lynn and I can talk to staff tomorrow and take a look at these, and maybe take some of these comments and figure out how to, because I heard that is, do we survey boards and commission members?
And staff would be my desire, because staff are the ones who are getting pulled the most. I mean, while council members, you know, we're part-timers really, but the staff are the ones who really get sliced and diced up through all of those.
My suspicion is that boards or commissions are generally, I mean, they volunteer to serve on these, I think they think their work is very important. I don't think you're going to hear, you know, do you want to get rid of your Board or Committee? No, of course not, because I've served on it.
What about Special Events Committee? We didn't even talk about them. That's just a staff.
But that's an ad hoc. Ad hoc by staff.
We don't have any back...
That's all I have, I know we...
Council meeting in 10 minutes, so...
Thank you for listening.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.